Good evening. The hour being out to five o'clock, it's my high honor and privilege to call the September 12th, 2024 school committee meeting to order. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance, and our flag is to our right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome to this first full formal meeting of the town board at our new middle school. We have an action-packed agenda this evening. We're very excited. And we begin our meeting, as we always do, with student recognitions. And this is quite fitting. We will begin this beginning of the school year with Walpole Middle School volunteer leaders. The Walpole Middle School Grade Eight volunteer leaders are present to be recognized for their hard work, leadership, and their ability to work with the middle school student tours. These students gave up one of their last summer days to volunteer and help acclimate the incoming classes to their new school. They greeted the students, as they did us this evening, and provided tours of the school. Not all the volunteers are able to attend. The full list of the volunteers is below. Their volunteerism is greatly appreciated, and they helped immensely to transition to our new middle school. I think we'll perhaps call upon the middle school principal to say something else.
Sure. So this year was a very unique, exciting year, as we opened up this brand-new, gorgeous, state-of-the-art building. And we had three days of tours for Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth graders. And not only did our Eighth grade leaders come in for one of those days, they also came in the Monday before to get acclimated with the building themselves so that they could lead on this. And we are incredibly grateful for their support. And a few of them are actually going to join me tonight, because it's very fitting for them to share some of the opening remarks. We'll get more from them in a little bit. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So they're coming back up after?
Some of them are. I don't know if anybody wants to...
Oh, I have to go clear.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you all. You know, I was here for those days when you were working, giving tours, doing some icebreakers. And really, we couldn't have done this without you. So I really appreciate your dedication and hard work. And I actually saw when you came to do some training as well, just even learning everybody's names and working with the assistant principals. So, nice job.
Questions or comments on the committee? Ms. Rogers?
I'm facing you. I'm bringing this closer. I'm facing you. So my daughter was one of the Seventh graders that you helped. So I just personally wanted to thank you for helping all the students that were very lost, even though you guys didn't really know the school yet. So I appreciate you doing that and dedicating your time.
Other questions or comments on the committee? Seeing none, if you guys would like to come up, we'd love to get a picture of you all and send it to our vast email audience as well. Perhaps, what do you think?
Yeah, right here.
Right here?
Just watch the coins, Carrie.
Show the folks in front.
You guys are gonna need to make like maybe three rows, sort of standing to sitting.
Mary got the picture. Excellent. Thank you very much. For those who are not staying for the other portion of the report, we know you have a lot to do and you don't have to listen to us go through policy later in the evening. So we're very grateful for that. Our next order of business is our Walpole High School student report. Representative James Patey will give a report from the high school. James?
Good evening, everyone.
I think we're just talking loud, James.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Patey, and I'm a junior at Walpole High School. The school year has officially begun, and we are into the first full week of school. Walpole High School welcomes a class of 2028 containing 230 new students. Students in Ninth Grade attended an assembly yesterday to introduce them to the Critical Incident Response, more commonly known or referred to as the ALICE program. The Walpole Police Department has worked with Walpole Public Schools for several years to prepare students and staff for the possibility of a dangerous situation. Training and drills will take place throughout the school year for all students. Walpole Public Schools offers optional Chromebook insurance for grades six through 12. The $30 fee will cover any accidental damage to Chromebooks through September of 2025. All high school students will complete a short confidential survey on Wednesday, October 2nd during interventions. The survey is from Massachusetts General Hospital regarding mental health and substance abuse. During interventions on Wednesdays, colleges are visiting Walpole High School, offering knowledge and handouts in the gym. Some of the colleges have already visited include UMass Amherst, Merrimack, Tufts, and the University of Alabama. Walpole Public Schools Music Department is offering private lessons for students in Grade Four, Fourth Grade through 12. Lessons are taught by accomplished performers for many instruments such as, including guitar, piano, trombone, and many more. Registration closes Monday, September 16th. Clubs are back up and running. Popular clubs many students are joining include Speech and Debate, Art Club, Bible Club, Photography Club, and newly started Dungeons and Dragons Club. Fall sports have been back in action for a few weeks, and the students are looking forward to an exciting fall season. The field hockey team is off to a great start and are currently undefeated at four now. The football team plays Foxborough in Foxborough tomorrow night at seven. Volleyball team as well, as the boys and girls soccer teams are playing today against Needham. Cross Countries next meet is Wednesday, September 18th, at home against Branchy. Student athletes are working hard and doing great. Class of 2025 yearbook planning is underway. Senior portraits must be submitted by October 4th. There is a Google classroom that students and parents and guardians can join, which will provide all announcements about important days throughout the school year. There is also an Instagram page. PAC will hold their first meeting of the year on Wednesday, October 23rd. Principal Embush will provide an overview of the Walpole High School auditorium renovation project. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. Questions or comments for James? Seeing none, we appreciate it. Please feel free to hang out for the rest of the meeting or go on to the other activities you have. I really appreciate you coming up this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
We now move on to our traditional first school committee meeting after the opening of school, opening of school reports, where we will hear from all the building principals. Perhaps we will hear from Ms. Rogero first, seeing as we're all very excited for this newest building. So come on down.
If you're an Eighth grade leader who's gonna join me, come on up now, okay?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carrie Rogero, proud principal of Walpole Middle School. So I'm happy to be here along with some of our Eighth grade leaders to provide an update regarding the opening of our brand-new school. This year, Walpole Middle School welcomed 842 students, 136 dedicated staff members to the new state-of-the-art facility. Among our staff, nine are brand-new to our school, bringing fresh energy and expertise to our community. The excitement among both students and staff have been palpable from the moment they walked through the doors. Our students have embraced the new learning spaces with enthusiasm, and it's been great to see how quickly they've adapted to their new surroundings. Staff have been equally energized, diving into teaching and learning with a renewed passion in a facility designed to enhance collaboration, innovation, and student engagement. The flexible spaces, modern technology, and thoughtful layout are already making a positive impact on the educational experience. So now I would like to introduce Roma on our next section of our opening. Come on up, Roma.
Hello. My name is Roma. As one of the Eighth grade leaders, I had the opportunity to help welcome students to our new school by giving tours with other Eighth grade leaders, administration, and staff. We held three days of tours for students by grade-level teams. It was a great experience showing everyone around with the building, helping them find their way, and answering any questions they may have had. We want to make sure all students felt comfortable and ready for the new school year. This also gave parents an opportunity to practice the temporary drop-off and pickup procedures. I think the tours really helped everyone get used to new spaces and made the transition smoother for everyone. And now I'd like to introduce Ainsley.
Hello. My name is Ainsley. I'd like to share how smoothly the first weeks of school have gone. Before we arrived, our teachers and staff started the year with professional development and training focused on the new facility, especially all the new technology. They also had time to plan and collaborate with each other to ensure everything was ready for us when we arrived. We were welcomed with engaging activities that helped us get familiar with the building and connect with our classmates and teachers. The staff made sure to create a safe and welcoming environment, setting high expectations for behavior, attitude, and effort right from the start. It's clear they've worked hard to help us have a great start to the school year. Next, I would like to introduce you all to Rithvik.
Hi. My name is Rithvik, and I wanted to share an update about the ongoing work at our new school. Vertex, Fontaine, and Tappa have been great partners, and they continue to stay on-site, making sure everything is completed and addressed as needed. The next phase of construction is focused on completing the parking lot, and we're excited to see that it's scheduled to be finished by October 25th. Right now, we have 17 buses for arrival and dismissal, and we've had temporary drop-off and pickup procedures in place during this phase of construction. We wanted to thank all the families for their patience as we work through this final part of the project. We're looking forward to everything being fully completed soon. I would now like to invite Carrie to the podium.
Hello. My name is Carrie, and my person. I'd like to take a moment and recognize and thank our custodians for their hard work in getting our new school ready. Over the summer, they worked really hard to close out Johnson and Bird Schools, and then spent time familiarizing themselves with our new building and getting trained on the building management systems. Thanks to their dedication and effort, everything was set and ready for us to open. We truly appreciate everything. Now I'm gonna invite Gabby to the stand.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gabby Bossy, and I'm an Eighth grade leader here at WMS. We are really excited for our families to have the chance to not only tour our amazing new state-of-the-art facility, but also to meet our incredible staff and hear about all the exciting things happening in our new curriculum. We're eager to share how this cutting-edge environment is enhancing student learning and engagement every day. It's been such a great start to the school year, and we can't wait to show everyone how this new space is making a positive impact on our education. Due to parking constraints, as we finalize this phase of construction on the parking lot, we have adjusted our back-to-school night schedule to better accommodate everyone. The Sixth Grade Back-to-School Night will now take place on Monday, October 28th, and we will hold a combined Seventh and Eighth Grade Back-to-School Night on Tuesday, October 29th, both from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Me, as well as our other awesome Eighth grade leaders, will be there to help guide parents and guardians that night. Next, I'll be introducing the awesome Eighth grade leader, Asaya.
Hello. My name is Asaya Joseph, and this year has already been a really exciting one. The new building has so much to offer, and one of the things we're really looking forward to is getting our after-school activities up and running. We're all eager to take full advantage of the incredible spaces, whether it's for clubs, sports, or other programs. Over the next few weeks, it's going to be great to see all these activities come together. With the new facilities, we have more room and resources to explore our interests, try new things, and hang out with friends after school. More information will be coming out in the WMS newsletter next week. I'll now re-invite Ria to the stage.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ria Kala, and today I will be talking to you guys about the new middle school. One of the most fantastic parts of our new building is the vinyl graphics around the halls. They really help us focus on what's most important as we move through the school. As you guys know, our core values of community are compassion, responsibility, resilience, and excellence. These values are the foundation of what we believe here in our new middle school. Our teachers make sure that these core values are the center of everything we do, and it's clear how they shape our actions and attitude every day. It's inspiring to be reminded of them as we walk through the halls, knowing how important they are to our success. Thank you, guys, for your time. Now, I will be asking Ms. Rogero to come back to the stage for the closing remarks.
Well, I am beyond impressed, so I will offer a big thank you and round of applause at the end. But I just wanted to take this time to, this opportunity to extend our appreciation for the continued support of the school committee, as well as central administration. Your support has been instrumental in making the opening of Walpole Middle School such a success. I would also like to thank our caring and dedicated educators, who are the true foundation of our school. Their passion, commitment, and hard work every day make a lasting impact on our students and help create a positive, engaging environment that we strive for. I look forward to working with our staff, students, and families to continuing the momentum of this strong start to the school year. So again, thank you for your time, and thank you so much, Eighth grade leaders. That was incredibly impressive. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rogero. Questions or comments from the committee? We're not done yet. This is Galvin.
I just wanted to say, I just really loved hearing how thoughtful and appreciative your comments were. Too many people in this world comment on the things that they don't like. And you were so positive, and I think that the world is a better place for people like you. So, thank you.
Mrs. Gail Toots?
I wanted to say congratulations, because it's a big deal to come up on a big stage like this and all speak so eloquently. Public speaking is a tough thing for many people, and you guys all rocked it, so good job. And I think this should be a new tradition, because I think this was fantastic to hear from students at this presentation. This was awesome.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming.
Do your job.
Who wants to go after that?
Steve? Call upon the high school? Jan, come on down.
All right. I'll follow that. Why not? Imagine if I brought our kids.
That would be the best.
Hi, everybody. Greetings. Good evening, school committee members, administrators, families, community members, students. As we begin the new school year, I'm pleased to provide an update on the progress at Daniel Peany Preschool. We currently have 65 students to open the school year. Understanding that number will grow as we grow throughout the year, which, our program brings together children with and without special needs in a collaborative and supportive environment. This integrated model provides an enriching environment for all children, promoting diversity, inclusivity, and peer modeling opportunities for social, emotional, and academic growth. We have a strong team of dedicated professionals supporting our preschoolers, who are committed to creating an engaging and nurturing environment that fosters early learning and development across all domains, including our seven special education teachers, 12 educational support staff, our two speech and language pathologists, our two occupational therapists, physical therapists, and our board-certified behavior analyst. In our curriculum and learning, our integrated preschool falls a developmentally appropriate curriculum aligned with the Massachusetts Play and Curriculum standards, focusing on social-emotional development with emphasis on peer interactions, emotional regulation and communication skills. We use the zones of regulation and social thinking to target these skills. And for the month of September, our focus in all the classrooms is on feelings and family and growing community. We focus a lot on language development, expressive and receptive language through using tabletop games, cooperative play, circle time, question of the day. For cognitive and academic readiness, we use introduction to basic literacy, numeracy, problem-solving skills through play-based learning, read alouds. They're playing, but they're learning, and they just, they don't realize it. We focus a lot on their gross-and-fine motor activities, and those are incorporated to support their coordination and strength. And of course, because we're an integrated program, we provide individualized detention for students who have individualized education programs to meet their specific learning and developmental needs. Recognizing the essential role our families play in their child's education, we're fostering strong relationships with our families through regular communication, in that this could be daily, incidentally, at arrival and drop-off, weekly newsletters, apps including Photo Circle, Class Dojo, just ongoing regular communication, parent-teacher conferences, and that regular update on student progress. And we also provide opportunities for parents and caregivers to participate in classroom activities such as being a mystery reader. Recently, this past week, we hosted our annual popsicles at preschool event to celebrate the start of the school year. And coming up, we have our first PAC meeting next week, school governance council, and our open house and curriculum night on September 30th. So we look forward to welcoming our families and students then. Our, just our goals for the year is just expanding the use of play-based learning activities that are adaptable to meet a child's unique needs, ongoing professional development to focus on best inclusive practices to meet the needs of all of our learners. So we're excited about the start of the school year and confident that our preschool program will continue to thrive and offer high-quality, early childhood education to all students. Our team is dedicated to providing a positive, safe, and inclusive environment that supports the growth and development of every child. As Mrs. Rogero said, you know, thank you for your continued support, the support of the town, the custodians, everybody who worked so hard to get our building up and running for the start of the school year. And I look forward to updating you on our progress throughout the school year.
Very much. Questions for the director? Seeing none? Thank you. Next?
The elementary principals?
I'm told you're presenting as a unit, so...
Hi. Good evening, school committee members. I'm a half of the elementary school principals. I want to thank you for inviting us here tonight to share a little bit about the opening of the 2024-2025 school year, one that's filled with joy, excitement, and potential. Across the district in the four elementary schools, we welcomed 1,760 students back to school in kindergarten through Grade Five. Boydin has 394, Elmwood 440, Fisher with 466, and Old Post Road School with 460 students. The summer was busy with hiring for educator and staff positions in each of our school communities. Across the elementary schools, we welcomed 33 new team members into our communities, including classroom teachers, specialists, education support paraprofessionals, and aides. We want to share our gratitude to Dr. Han and his team, who held an engaging orientation for new staff that left participants energized and equipped to start their school years successfully. Also, we want to thank all of the Walpole Public School educators in each of our buildings, who have stepped up to be mentors to our new staff, providing connections and support during the transition one experiences when starting in a new place. We're excited to work with the new elementary school mentor liaison, who will collaborate with us and all the mentors to ensure our new staff are getting their needs met throughout the year. Each school has been establishing and building relationships within the community through our partnerships with each of the PACs, and events such as ice cream socials, kindergarten meetups, and an opening of the year PAC meetings. Additionally, our classrooms, through the strong efforts of our educators, are warm and welcoming spaces that seek to provide safe and affirming learning environments for all students, where they will grow, be challenged, and achieve at high levels. We all understand the critical importance of strong homeschool partnerships and look forward to continue to fostering relationships with all families in service of improving student engagement, growth, and achievement. Of particular note this summer was work at Old Post Road and Fisher Schools, where solar panels were installed on the roofs of their buildings, helping the Walpole Public Schools become greener and more energy-efficient and sustainable. We want to take this opportunity to share our gratitude for our custodial staff and Building Maintenance Department, who helped prepare our buildings for students and staff to return, and to Officer Hart, Rebel, and the Walpole Police Department and Fire Department, who have been supporting us in practicing our emergency preparedness protocols and procedures. Looking ahead, we are all excited and deep into preparations for our curriculum night and open houses. The opportunities in the coming weeks will allow for families to engage with our educators, to learn more about the curriculum instruction that is offered to their children. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Dearborn to talk a little bit more about curriculum.
Thank you, everyone. So, I have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about a curriculum initiative or implementation that we have tonight, and some professional development that will be going on as well. So beginning this school year, we are excited to be implementing the Holton Mifflin Hardcore Interreading Literacy Curriculum for all grades, kindergarten through Grade Five. This comprehensive, research-based program meets the expectations on both ed reports and curate, as it has been widely adopted by both local and national school districts. This program will be taught in conjunction with our Phonics and Foundational Skills Program, Foundations, in our K2 classrooms. The interreading curriculum was selected through a thorough curriculum review process involving educators, literacy experts, parent surveys, and district outreach. In this program, all students will gauge in high-quality, authentic texts in order to build knowledge and vocabulary. Students will strengthen their comprehension skills through reading, writing, and classroom discourse. The curriculum is designed to meet the diverse needs of our students, ensuring that each child can grow as a learner. Some of the things that the students will see in this curriculum are engaging texts. Students will have access to a wide variety of texts that reflect different cultures, perspectives, and genres. These texts are carefully selected to be both challenging and interesting, helping students develop critical thinking skills. They also be exposed to integrated learning. The program integrates reading, writing, speaking, and listening activities, allowing students to build literacy skills in a cohesive and meaningful way. There is also a personalized support part of it. Interreading includes resources for differentiating instruction so teachers can meet the needs of all learners, whether they need extra support or enrichment. And of course, there's a family involvement. We recognize that families play a crucial role in this child, in their child literacy development. The curriculum includes resources and activities that can be used at home to support the child's learning. The staff is very excited about this new curriculum and the resources and learning opportunities it provides for our students. We understand that the interreading curriculum will be implemented over multiple years, and the professional development is an important part of that implementation process. Very similar to the way we implemented the Bridges Math Curriculum, which we are in our third year of, much of our professional development this year will be focused around literacy and the reading curriculum. We established an implementation team made up of one teacher per grade level, per school, that will work closely with the interreading coaches and our literacy coordinator. They will lead their teams in grade-level implementation and also support our professional development that will take place during grade-level team meetings, curriculum meetings, and early release. Though much of the professional development will focus on literacy, we understand the importance of continued support at our educators in a variety of subject areas. So we do plan to have some professional development in the area of math, social-emotional development, science, and a variety of other topics. We are excited for this curriculum to be involved in the Walpole Public Schools, as well as the many other things that we'll be teaching and working with our students throughout the school year.
Questions or comments for the elementary school?
Well, yes, this is for, I think, for you guys and for Ms. Rogero. So, we obviously have new busing patterns in town with the combination of the two schools. And I think we know, I know on my own personal experience and just around the community, that buses are, it's been a later time period to get the students home after school. I imagine a lot of that has to do with the traffic pattern not being finalized here. We're battling construction, roadwork all around town. Washington Street's about to be closed for two weeks, which is gonna be its own challenge. But just curious if there are any sort of, if there's any work being done, or is there anything we can do prior to the traffic pattern being settled, or have we identified any other factors that we might need to make adjustments to busing in general? So, I don't know. That's probably my question, but it feels like the time to bring it up.
So I think that you summarized the factors that are impacting busing this year. I think the large one, obviously, is the middle school, as you mentioned. You know, it's hard to anticipate restructuring of a, putting two schools together and restructuring their bus routes to accommodate the transportation to that building. That's been challenging, but I think it's been well-managed at this school in particular. Unfortunately, the spillover that the way- Unfortunately, the spillover, the delays that come from that restructuring are falling down to the elementary schools and impacting those schools. So we are aware of it, we're keeping track of the data about those routes and the delays. We've, as a central office, reached out to the principals and allowed extra staffing at the schools to be compensated to monitor students who might be late getting to their buses, so that the principals can work on other activities such as staff meetings and curriculum meetings and still attend those while still taking care to protect the students' safety. So it is a work in progress. It is the biggest challenge we've probably ever faced in the district as far as busing goes, but we are looking at it closely and making every effort we can to improve it. We sent out a communication today. We're focusing on the buses that are heavily impacted, and we'll work from that going forward to make sure that the communication is there about strategies and methods we're using to help improve the situation. So it is a work in progress. We are hopeful that the completion of this school in the front where the teacher parking and the bus is coming off of East Street rather than coming in off of Washington and getting stuck at the light will help to improve the situation, and we're pushing to get that done as soon as possible.
And are there, is it predominantly issues of just timing and delays? Are there any ridership issues with any of the routes?
Yeah, so it's actually both. So it's our ridership, we've encouraged more students to ride the bus to specifically the middle schools, so that we are reducing the number of cars queuing up on this site. That was successful, but that has also increased the capacity on every bus, and that's something we haven't faced nearly to that level. So we have very high ridership, which impacts the routes, which impacts the timing. So it's all kind of tied together, and that's what we're working with currently.
And thanks, Mike. And we really need to wait until the construction is completed.
Here.
Here, to see then, with the timing, how much time that makes up, and then from there, if any changes need to be made, then we will, instead of making changes, you know, every two weeks. It's just, that will get frustrating. So we'll wait till the construction's finished, look at the timing, and then Mike and his team will work on the.
And Rethvec tells us October 25th is the target date. Okay, so I guess the message for the community is we're aware of it and be patient, be as patient as you can.
Yes, and everyone really has been incredibly understanding.
Thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Rogers?
I think this ties with transportation, new school, new curriculum is sort of a plea or maybe just an encouragement for patience for the community, because we are doing a lot of new things, and people are excited about it, and everyone's working hard on it, and I see it every day between administration and teachers and everyone, and sort of what Nancy was saying about the positivity, and that there are a lot of really positive, amazing things going on. So I think, I just wanted to say something about making sure that we're sharing all those great accomplishments that are happening too, and yes, there are growing pains, and we're working through them, but I applaud transportation and curriculum in this beautiful middle school, you know, for functioning as well as it has given all this newness. And I'll, can I just?
Yeah, go for it.
Just, elementary school principals who aren't necessarily getting all the shiny new things, but are kind of getting some of the pitfalls, thank you for your patience and understanding and working so hard to kind of mitigate the impact on your students and families. It's appreciated.
Mrs. Galvian.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for sharing that curriculum and instruction information. I think people really are glad to know that we're a district that is taking that, those responsibilities so seriously. So I think it was important that it was part of tonight's discussion, because I know so many teachers and the four of you principals and Dr. Han, Dr. Goff dug in really deep to do a good job, and we appreciate it.
Further questions or comments? I do think the curriculum piece bears underscoring just the tremendous level of work. The four of you, as not only building leaders, but curriculum leaders and instructional leaders in your own buildings, the deliberative, deep process that you undertook and the work you committed to, to implement this over the, over the coming years, I think, is a tremendous undertaking, and I think you, the, I, as someone who's been watching this process over the past year, I just, I'm very happy with the way that process has rolled out and the work the four of you have done, and I think I'm very excited to see the fruits of that. And when we start getting into sort of reports on subject areas in the coming months and years, I'll be very excited to hear what comes from that as well, but it was a tremendous effort, and it should, should be very underscored, the work you've all done, and I'm excited to see the fruits of that going forward.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just, I'd like to also recognize Shannon Finley.
Yeah, absolutely.
She's not here in the room tonight, and Bill, obviously, is, but he did a lot of work around that, worked with Shannon. But Shannon was tremendous in this whole process and doing a lot of research on the other side to help guide us in this process of picking this curriculum. So we couldn't have done this without Shannon and Bill working together, so.
Excellent. Yeah, we're blessed with a number of great professionals in this district, too.
Agreed.
We're doing great stuff. Anything further? Last but surely not least would be the high school.
Steven, those two get it next year.
You didn't get to tag out with it.
We're gonna have kids next year.
Good afternoon, everyone. Significant progress was made over the summer to prepare the high school for the new school year, most notably, a new roof was installed on the Science Wing, addressing damage from a winter storm. Additionally, air conditioning was installed in the Social Studies Wing, which, much to the delight of students and staff. We remain committed to improving HVAC systems across the entire building as part of our ongoing infrastructure upgrades. Alongside these improvements, we are also excited about the upcoming renovations and expansions planned for the high school. This year's school opening went exceptionally well. On August 26th, we hosted our annual ninth-grade orientation, welcoming incoming freshmen to meet their teachers and explore our extensive range of clubs and activities. This event gives ninth graders a head start, allowing them to familiarize themselves with the school environment before the upperclassmen arrive, which makes for a smoother transition. As always, we have welcomed new staff members to the high school, including teachers, ESPs, and support staff. Their enthusiasm has already made a positive impact, and we are eager to establish strong professional connections with them throughout the year. On August 27th, our staff participated in a full professional development day featuring a speaker from ASCD, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. This year, our focus is on differentiated instruction, with plans for several more workshops throughout the year, including a full professional development day on November 5th. In terms of extracurricular activities, the high school is buzzing with opportunities. We currently offer 22 sport teams across 10 different fall sports, and there are over 40 clubs and activities for students to explore. With such a wide variety of options, there's something for everyone to get involved in, ensuring a vibrant and engaging student body. Lastly, a reminder to the community that our Back to School Night is scheduled for next Thursday, September 19th, at 6:30. We invite all parents to join us for this event. We look forward to another outstanding school year at Walpole High.
Questions or comments for Principal Imbush? Got a lot more high school on the agenda, but Mrs. Galvian?
I just want to say I also appreciate your positivity, Steve. Every year, you come through with it, and, you know, it was obvious with the kids that were here in the new building, but you bring it every time, so, thank you.
Thank you. We'll talk to you in a couple years after the high school project.
Nope, I count on Steve.
Anything further? All right, moving on, we have the Reverend Student Activity Fund update. Mr. Frischa?
Appreciate that introduction.
Great stuff. A lot of nickels.
I sent you a couple of colored jazz notes for you.
Steven, I'll see you in a couple, I'll see you at 7:00.
That's about to end. So this evening, I've included within your packet is a list of the clubs, balances, and activities that are hosted at each school as part of what we call student activities around, coming around. It's just a description. I gave this out about six or seven years ago, and I thought it was a good reflection on what student activities are. Maybe our viewing audience would like to hear what these accounts are and how they're different from some of our traditional accounts. So student activities are established by the school committee to ensure that young people have an opportunity to take part in co-curricular and extracurricular classroom experiences. How the student activities funds unique, the student activity funds are collected from students and families and are held in custody by the school department until they are utilized to pay for the activity that they were originally collected for. So they're different than appropriated dollars. They don't come from the town, they are provided by families to, so that their students can engage, or their children can engage in activities that are hosted within the school. On the second page, is a listing of how these student activity accounts operate. A student activity event is planned or hosted at the school. That's the first step. Funds are collected from students. Funds are deposited in the student activity agency account, which is a savings account, so it earns, they earn interest. A request for reimbursement form is completed by the school and sent to the town finance director to pay and invoice. Funds are moved out of their savings account into the checking account. A check is issued by the student activity funds coordinator, which there is one of those at each school. And then the principal, because the principal is responsible for these student activities accounts, they are the ones who sign off on the check and issue the check for payment, so that the students can engage in whatever activity it is. So this includes field trips and activities such as clubs and things that are hosted after school, so related to curriculum and extracurricular as well. So in your packet is a listing, and this is all guided under Mass General Law, by the way, which is included in your packet as well. So in the first page of your handout is a list of each one of our schools. So you can see the elementary schools to the left, Johnson and Byrd, because they did exist separately, right, until we merged the schools, and then Walpole High School. So you can see the listing of all the different clubs. So if you're wondering what activities take place after school, this is a pretty good example of the plethora of things that a lot of our students are able to engage in. I know Mr. Han and Ms. Rogero have talked a lot at length about adding more clubs, especially to this amazing building, because there's so much of an opportunity to take advantage of that. So that's the existing clubs with the existing balances. And by the way, I'm gonna ask for a vote at the end of this, so please make sure you can attend to it. So, and then on the second page, is the Johnson and Byrd repeated, the ending balances, and then the merger that took place. So we had to combine these accounts, and we used our discretion to combine them into similar accounts that are reflected on that combined Walpole Middle School combined balances. And that shows you, if you took the Johnson and Byrd separately, added them up, it should come up to what the Walpole Middle School combined account balance total is, okay? Then on the third page, whenever we introduce a new club, obviously, the principal's aware of it, the teachers come to the principal and request it. So here's an example of a write-up of the one additional club that we have requested for this year, which is National Art Honor Society. And it gives you a breakdown of, you know, the purpose of the organization, the membership, how that's made up, who is supervising these clubs, because there's always an adult who's part of these clubs running them, and that person has to be compensated, hence why we collect the funds for these student activities. So with that in mind, the Mass General Law requires that, once you guys look at it, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them now, I can answer any questions you may have, but it does require a vote to approve the clubs as they're listed, the balances as they stand, and then the request for an additional club. Happy to answer any questions you have about student activities. And yes, Mr. Buckley, is a fascinating one.
Questions or comments for Assistant Superintendent Frischa on student activities? Seeing none, chilling. Wait, you have a question?
Sorry.
Of course, you have, what we got?
Um, here you, Mike, is there any, are we under any obligation to ensure, like, parity of dollar amounts across schools? Or is it completely principal discretion, school by school, whatever you have in the account is what you have, based on what you've taken in?
We always look at equity amongst our schools, right? And we look at the balances, and we kind of keep, keep an eye on things that they're equal, do they, are they comparable? But they do not have to be equal. Each school has its own resources, each school has its own priorities, and you can see that within the clubs, that there's certain activities they value more than others in the schools. So we just kind of keep an eye on it. We don't like the balances to get excessive. There's actually a cap on each school's balance. Principal has the discretion to move money around, they can support scholarships to help students, you know, go to or join these different clubs and activities. So we do keep an eye on it to make sure that it represents everyone as much as possible.
Can I add something? I know I'm not the finance guy, but I want to, it's important to the relevant to your question. We spend a great deal of time at leadership with our principals and also in the work we do with the Equity Task Force to ensure that there isn't a school or a club that's underfunded, that maybe doesn't get the support or services, so that's something that we are very careful and conscientious of, and these balances don't necessarily represent whether or not something would run or not run, because if we felt it was important to the growth of our students or their access to extracurricular activities, we would help support it in other ways.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the clubs and balances as listed in the packet and the addition of the National Art Honor Society Club.
motion by Mr. Green, second by Mr. Cauter, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. Anything? We have first reading of policies. We have AC, the non-discrimination and harassment policy, and JIE, pregnant students' policy.
Yes. So, thank you, policy subcommittee members, very valuable Jen, Gary, and Adrian, and then also legal counsel as well, when we're looking at policies. This one is changes that were made to the federal level of Title IX, which is addresses various topics of discrimination issues. So in many ways, Massachusetts has already adopted extra protections. So there really aren't many substantive changes for us. However, in reviewing these existing policies for schools in Massachusetts, it was discovered that there's a lot of redundancy in various school committee policies. So through their legal counsel, as well as our legal counsel, most districts took this opportunity to not only have to comply with the new Title IX changes, but also to consolidate and simplify discrimination-related policies. So we currently have the following policies, which are in your packet, as a first reading, to be rescinded. We have non-discrimination, a non-discrimination based on, of sex, harassment, and then sexual harassment slash Title IX. So we're recommending the rescinding of all of these policies and replacing them with just one, titled non-discrimination and harassment. Rescinding those four policies and replacing them with the one requires a school committee vote. In addition, through that one policy, you would be authorizing me to adopt procedures, which we have, for complaints of discrimination and harassment. There will be two procedures, one for sex, gender-based claims, that's called Title IX Sex Discrimination Grievance Procedure, and one for all the other claims based on protected classes such as age, national, origin, religion, et cetera, and that's called the Civil Rights Grievance Procedure. These have already been drafted through Dr. Quillie, he's the contact person, and once through the second reading, this policy, you know, when it's adopted, then we'll link those, those will be available on the website, and they're, of course, they're referenced in the policy as well. And then the second policy we have, which goes along with that, that's, that is a new policy that needs to be adopted, is for pregnant students. We do have that policy. You'll see that this policy is a little bit longer, talks about Title IX, and then I think talks about making, you know, modifications, you know, as necessary, as outlined in the policy. So those are the two names. What, did I get it all?
I think so. I have one question.
Yes.
On the non-discrimination and harassment, I think it's much clearer now. I'm questioning whether or not in the third paragraph, after, I guess, three, four, five lines now, we should say discriminated against. I feel like we should have inserted the word harassment there.
One, two, three, four, five. Yep, I see it. All right. I'll add that to when we do a final review.
And then I'm gonna go through and make sure that.
The policies.
Policies, tie them to the grievance procedure.
Because a lot of, when you look at the procedures, and I do have classes here that I can, I can give you, they outline all the definitions, you know, everything that's in there. I mean, it's a pretty substantial packet when you look at these, but these are proceedings. But these are procedures, not policy, so, but we still want to make sure that Jen is going to work on just vetting them and making sure that, especially through employment, that everything's in there, that needs to be in there.
I think just for the edification of folks watching at home, the way we do policy is, you know, there's a lot that is prescribed. There's a lot of model policies we get from M.A.C. and other places, and then we take them, we have a number of readings before the body, as well as having our own counsel and members of the policies, have pretty, examine them as well. So, this is just the first reading, and we'll be back on our agenda probably next, next time around.
And if you have any questions in the meantime, don't, I mean, feel free to email me, and I can, we can, or Mary, we can get it out to the subcommittee.
Any other questions on the policies in their first reading?
More of a comment?
Sure.
We're very lucky to have Councilor Giocets on the subcommittee, because it's enormously helpful to have her legal lens on it.
Yeah, it's extremely helpful. Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, we'll move on to our fourth item of new business, which is a reminder about the fail, Charles Fails, Joseph Leach, Benjamin Rogers, and Dottie and William Cundy Scholarship applications, which will be available for Walpole High School graduates this October. I believe we open it up the first, we close it Halloween by four P.M. It's a tremendous opportunity. The majority of these people were members of our body in the past and have chosen through their estates to give significant amounts of money so that Walpole High School students who have gone on to secondary education can avail themselves of this, this great opportunity. So, we love, it's a lot of work, but we'd rather the stack to be big than small that we're looking at. So, it will be available on the school committee website starting October first and closing October thirty-first, so we hope that folks will help us make sure that, if you know a graduate out there, that we flag that for them.
Make one comment?
Sure.
So, the date, correct, remember, the date is scheduled for twelve-ten, Mary, at six o'clock, which I believe that's the same date as the school building committee meeting, which starts at six-thirty. I think that happened to us last year. I'm going to check to see if it's, if it's, we're definitely meeting on that date, but I think we should come up with a second option, so Mary can send out a due to poll, and at least we'll keep that in the queue. Perfect. Because I know three of us impacts, at least, I think, believe, three school committee members and me.
Excellent. Dr. Goff, superintendent's report.
Yes, so as we know, the students have been in school for, you know, ten, ten days now. Smooth opening, the weather cooperated, it's been great to see our classrooms come alive. Again, thank our administration and the staff for their hard work in preparing for the opening of our schools. Dr. Han and I have already been out to the schools to greet and welcome the students and their staff. You know, we welcome students moving in from, you know, just our neighboring towns, and those who return to Walpole Public Schools from charter schools, vocational schools, and private schools. We also welcome families who move to Walpole from other states, such as New York, Florida, Rhode Island, and Indiana, and from other countries such as Brazil, Ethiopia, and the U.K. All principals mentioned, as you know, our open houses, back-to-school nights are scheduled in the next two weeks, so please check those calendars. You know, our back-to-school nights, it's really a wonderful opportunity for families to get a firsthand glimpse into your child's educational journey, and they're really informative sessions designed to bridge the gap between home and school. So, really a chance to meet the teachers, but also gain insights into things like classroom routines, curriculum plans, and also to discover how you can actively support your child's learning experience. Enrollment, I believe you have the enrollment, the updated as of now. You'll get another one October first, but you can see our current student enrollment. It's still fluid, and like I said, we'll give you the update. You will notice that from last year to this year, you might notice the preschool enrollment, you know, it was eighty-one and it dropped to sixty-five. That's not an enrollment that, that has to do with a second VIP program that was added. So, when you add that, then those students, you know, are separate. So, therefore, it decreases the spaces for typical peers, because it is a special education program. In terms of safety and security, I continue to meet and communicate with Chief Kelleher and the Walpole P.D. The officers are in the process, and as you know, are both setting up, and they've been conducting Alice training within our schools. Both Officer Hart and Chief Kelleher will be attending an upcoming school committee meeting. In the meantime, I do think it's important to share the critical safety procedures and protocols that we have in place. All entrances are locked at all times. Additionally, this year, card access control systems were installed at all buildings, and these cards are required in order for staff to enter the buildings. All visitors to the school are to be admitted through the main office. We have security cameras at each entrance that allow for office staff to visually screen any visitors to the school prior to admitting them in the building. We have intercom systems at the main entrance to verbally communicate with all visitors. Security cameras are installed throughout the building. Classrooms have telephones and intercom. Strategically, specific staff utilizes walkies to enhance communication. Key locations have emergency alert buttons that can be used to summon help immediately. Staff are trained on emergency protocols and periodically practice of evacuations and critical incident response drills with both students and staff. Each school has a crisis response team that convenes in the event of a school-based emergency. And each school also has a threat safety assessment team that monitors the well-being of our students. Again, we work closely with the Walpole Police Department and the Fire Department in the development, review, and implementation of emergency procedures. And finally, all staff members are, maintain heightened vigilance in monitoring our school environment. Next, I'm seeking Walpole High School students to serve on the superintendent's cabinet. This is my second year. The cabinet is really a unique opportunity for our Walpole High School students to share and feedback experiences and perspectives on a variety of issues affecting students, schools, and the Walpole community. So, it will be students in grades nine through twelve. I believe Steven sent it out today or yesterday for me, and there's an application form, and the applications are due Thursday, September twenty-sixth, by five P.M., and I've added some dates throughout the years to meet more often. And then finally, September twentieth, eight-thirty to nine-forty-five, at the Walpole High School track, will be Walk with the Supers with Dr. Han and me, designed to promote community engagement and wellness. So, people can come for a portion, stay for the entire time. And please be reminded, September twentieth is also an early release date. That's what I have.
Questions or comments for the superintendent? Mrs. Galvian?
I just wanted to say, when you were talking about the safety things, we were talking in the school that I work at, it feels anti-community, or it feels wrong to walk by a door if you're inside and not open it for the person who is waiting to come in. But it's really important to let the person be buzzed in and do the proper procedure, because unfortunately, you know, in your effort to be kind, if you don't, you know, if you don't know the person, you just can't be opening the door from the inside for, for people that are coming. That, all those safety procedures that you have are there for a reason, and it's, I think if we turn it around and tell people we're protecting their children, and don't be insulted if somebody doesn't open the door for you. It reminds me, for those of you that remember Suzanne Gillum, you know, my predecessor, when I was at Byrd Middle School, and she was the principal, like, drilled that into everybody, and, you know, no one would open the door. And one time, former assistant superintendent, Dr. Kenny, was outside, and she had some boxes and was trying to figure out to get in the building, and a student reported her to, to come out. I mean, it just shows the importance, just situational awareness and being vigilant.
Good stuff. Anything further? Seeing none, moving on to old business, perhaps our last middle school building project update.
On time and on budget, that's what I keep saying, right? Here we are, I don't think I have anything to add, people have already spoken quite well to it, so.
Thank you so much. Excellent.
I feel like we should show the audit for, isn't there, we don't like?
Okay. Great, thank you.
We'll show the end for the, for the big reveal. Moving on, to our next focus, capital-wise, is our high school renovation project.
So, we agreed on a public forum
That's correct.
September twenty-sixth
Six, seven P.M.
At seven P.M. So, we have the flyer ready. Mary will get that out, I'll put that out in my, my smore. I texted Kate, so she'll be there. And hopefully, we should have the meeting room, right?
Excellent.
So, it will be, it will be good to go.
Karen?
Just so the communities are aware, so this is going to be similar to the forums that we held prior to voting on the middle school project, the town-wide vote. Because there's no override involved in the proposed high school plans, there isn't going to be a town-wide vote. It's just simply a matter of town meeting appropriating the funding within the town budget, which shortly after leaving here, we'll all be traveling down to the meeting where the finance committee takes up that warrant article. But all that is to say, the forum is just a chance to inform the community of what the plans are and share the budget and the funding sources. And we invite the community to share questions. You can come in person, you can share, you can email questions ahead of time that we'll do our best to answer. But just so everybody is aware, you know, as a community member, you will not be asked to vote on this project, but we do hope that you will take the opportunity to inform yourself about it and share your questions with us so we can get you answers.
And that's a good point, because I know there's, FAQ is just about finalized. So, if people do have questions that didn't put pretty comprehensive FAQ, but then we can add it, and, and that will be on the website.
Mrs. Galvian?
So, are we posting that FAQ soon? So that people who are interested could read that, and that might spark some questions? Good.
Anything further on the high school? Excellent, subcommittee activity. Want to meet? Mrs. Galvian?
Yeah, we met as a negotiating subcommittee. And, you know, just talked about the possibility of getting started soon. And there's some, there's some real value in us doing that. So, I would like to make a suggestion that we ask Dr. Goff to, on our behalf, write to the union, an official request to open negotiations at a, I would say, at a mutually agreeable time, ideally in early October, to give them an idea of what we're thinking. And then we'll work out the timing from there.
Excellent. Consensus for that?
Okay. I'm on it.
Anything further, sub-curricular sort of cover as well?
And policy.
And policy, that was it. Get to the end here. Citizens' comments? Just ask, nothing? All right, approval of warrants to nations of men.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following warrants. We have accounts payable for schools in special education under warrant number two-two-five-zero-zero-nine, and accounts payable schools two-two-five-zero-one-zero for the amounts listed in your packet.
Second. Motion by Ms. Rogers, second by Mr. Breen, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Take the gifts and donations.
I can take them.
Thank you, Mrs. Galvian.
We have a donation to Walpole High School from Music Drives Us for two thousand five hundred dollars. We have a system-wide donation from Community Gardens for two hundred seventy-eight dollars. And Boydin has a combined, a combined donation from Base Date Textiles, Shutterfly, and the pack for a total of one thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Second the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Galvian, second by Ms. Donizio, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Minutes.
I'll take that. Like to make a motion to approve the August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Galvian, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the September fifth, twenty-twenty-four policy subcommittee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Galvian, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carried, six zero zero.
To make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Rogers, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. We'll see you at town hall in an hour.